In order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Hope you had a good Labor Day weekend. I know I did. It was good. Roll call, please.
Marc Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Joanne Sherkey.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
All right, next thing we have bills payable. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of two hundred, two thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yeah.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Marc Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the supervisors' report. Lots happened since we last met. It's like a long time. I don't know.
Agreed.
Uh, billion blight issues is always going on. Um, lots of dangerous building, uh, enforcement's going on. The garage on Estor Green has been removed and brought up to grade. Um, and we have other cases waiting in court, ready to go. And others that we're working on with the homeowners. Um, speaking of the, the DNR, we had a, worked on the issue throughout the most of the weekend, actually, with Chief George Rose and my coach a little bit and myself. Mostly with the DNR and, um, Eagle was involved, US Coast Guard and other enforcement peoples. Someone made, uh, two pontoons.
Oh, I saw that.
Consisting of each one, two large propane tanks that were over eighty feet long. And they just spla- they splashed them at the, uh, DNR access site on the South Channel. And, um, they really didn't break any township regulations per se. But, uh, the DNR, they were basically on their property stuck. Uh, one was stuck when they were unloading it, another one they were waiting to unload. Uh, DNR really took the lead on it and, uh, dealt with the homeowner, not the homeowner, the owner of the pontoons. Uh, he eventually did get them both in the water. Uh, although the DNR told not, and the Coast Guard told not to splash the second one. And they're, they're moved a little bit, a couple hundred yards, and they're fast to ground right now on state property. Uh, I've been getting tons of phone calls about it and, um, they, um, and emails and other things about people are worried about it there. Um, right now, it's in the hands of DNR and actually Eagle Enforcement because it's sitting on the bottom lands right now. Um, but I'm sure there'll be more to the story to come, but it was, kept us all busy this weekend. Um, and, uh, let's see, what else is going on? Uh, water plant update. The new membranes are here with a start install date of September thirteenth. They're gonna start installing the first bank. Um, the roof on the chemical building is done. The raw water traveling screen work is done. The low service pump rehabs, there's three of them, that's done. And the PLC upgrades on the filter master controls is scheduled for October and November. So they got just about everything on their list checked off or about to be checked off. Uh, road paving started on Harson's Island. Uh, as you remember, they're gonna be doing golf course, middle channel, part of North Channel and all Bates. And, um, they had golf course closed today. They put a new culvert underneath, which is, I'm glad they did it before they fixed the road. Uh, they, they replaced the culvert and, um, I thought they'd be a little further off. I don't know. They're, they're gonna, but they're, they're, they're on site working the contractors. Um, and then Phelps is scheduled to be done later in September. The county's having a, uh, public hearing for the county beach park right here, September twenty-seventh at six o'clock in our hall. So they're still working on the design and, uh, everything, but, um, I haven't seen a flyer or anything come out on that yet. But I know it's scheduled for September twenty-seventh. I believe it's a Tuesday here at six o'clock. Uh, we're in the middle of our audit and it's been very time consuming, but I think it's going well. And, uh, I was actually relieved not to see him here today, truthfully. Uh, let's see. Oh, last week, about a week, a week and a half ago, we had a windstorm. Brought down several trees and power outages. We lost two trees in our park and two in the cemetery. One of the trees here that actually fell on our roof on our building, uh, in the back and put several, uh, holes and damages on it. Uh, we called our insurance agent and, uh, the estimator came out. And he says he's gonna, we could file a claim that's gonna pay for half of our, our roof up there. So I, we're working on getting a couple quotes and, um, still waiting on his estimate too. So, um, I myself think we should get the whole roof repaired and, uh, well, we'll see what it comes out to be. We'll bring that back once we, we get our numbers. Uh, let's see, I was interviewed by Yo Noda, a Japanese professor from, oh, boy, Deutsche University is in Japan. Anyhow, he was doing research on how, um, um, government, small government connects with the citizens in the US and compare how, how it works in Japan. And it was, it was pretty cool talking with him and, uh, um, I don't know, we chatted for about an hour and a half. And, uh, he also interviewed Royal Oak, Troy, Metamora and Clay Township. So that was kinda cool. Uh, so our scheduled fall cleanup date is October eighth, one day, all Saturday, both on the mainland and on the island. Uh, we couldn't arrange for a Sunday pickup on the island due to lack of dumpsters and the landfills close on Sunday. So, uh, we're gonna do it Saturday. And in conjunction with that, we're organizing a block party on the island, downtown San Souci. Um, we'll be dancing in the streets. We have, uh, um, set, it's kind of, the stage is gonna be set up where the San Souci bar is, is closed. And, um, we're gonna bring in, um, um, well, the ideas behind it is, you know, is the businesses and everything so seasonal there. By this date, everything will be closed on the island, or not everything, but just about everything. And we try to give a little shot in the arm to the businesses over there. And, uh, so we're gonna close the street down right just downtown San Souci at four o'clock. And, uh, we're, uh, we're gonna have bands and porta-johns and the things. The first band is gonna start at five o'clock, Ten Beach Drive. And then, uh, around eight, eight-thirty, the second band will start, uh, Dogfish. And we're inviting all the businesses to stay open for that night. Any nonprofits that wanna do fundraising during this event, they are more than welcome. Just contact me. And we have, um, I believe we filled, we might have one sponsorship left, but, um, it will be full. Uh, this is gonna be totally funded from sponsors, so that's, uh, that's cool. Um, still getting quotes together for our exercise equipment and our walking path in our park. And, uh, we're also looking at with this, excuse me, with this grant to, uh, replace our, um, playscape. And, um, if we get it, we can put in a new playscape and, uh, we're, I'm thinking out loud, it's basically repurposing that existing playscape in another area of the township. I got a couple ideas on that. To go out and buy, just buy it, that playscape. I mean, it's fifteen years old, but it would cost eighty thousand dollars and they said we could refurb it pretty reasonably. So if we, this grant, we can, I want a pirate ship playscape. So, uh, and we'll see. We get it. Um, St. Clair, oh, yeah, it's kinda sad. The St. Clair County Parks and Direct, uh, St. Clair County Parks Director, Nancy Windsor, has stepped down this past week. The, uh, she's been replaced by the deputy director, Dennis Delore. He is now the new director. So he'll be coming by eventually to introduce himself to you guys. I, I know who he is. Um, but I wish Nancy well. It was great working with her for the short time. She did a lot. And I wanna give big thanks to Linda Schoonover. Um, she donated four anchors to save our South Channel Lights group, uh, for a fundraiser. They make these anchors. I have one in my house. They're, I don't know, about this high, very wide. They bolt on the wall. I wish I had one here to, uh, to show you. They're, they're pretty awesome. Um, she donated one to the police, two to the fire department, one for each side and one for our office here. So she, uh, donated four of them to Clay Township for us to enjoy. So thank you, Linda Schoonover, for that. Music in the park is pretty much finished up. We do have one more on the island, September seventeenth, in conjunction with, um, Harson's Island Sinclair Flats Association, Piggros. And I'll be putting it on social media. During that event, we'll be collecting food again for our blessing boxes. Um, that went very well when we did it in our last music in the park. And I do have somebody, uh, working on building another blessing box for our furry friends, for pets. So, um, actually we had people already donated, uh, dog and cat food for them. So, we had a backpack giveaway about a week and a half ago in the park. They gave away two hundred and seventy-two backpacks filled. I mean, it's just stuff with school supplies. And, uh, it was a successful event. I think we had five, six hundred people in the park. They had lots of other things for them to do. And it was a huge, uh, huge success. Congrats to the Harson's Island Lions for another successful turkey shoot. Um, I was actually part of the antique boat parade. I know they had eighty, over eighty boats in it, most ever. And, um, George will probably mention it. The Harson's Island Fire Department had their annual pancake breakfast and they served over four hundred people. And it was good. It really, huh? There was eggs, the sausage, the bacon. It's, they, it's a great job. Um, so that was awesome. Everyone was, it was, everyone had smiles on their face checking out the airboat and the trucks and everything. The annual sturgeon fishing tournament is, uh, this Saturday night, uh, September seventeenth. And they have, they're all full registration. They actually expanded to thirty-five boats this year. And, um, uh, this is very popular. It grows every year as they, as much, as fast as they can. And this is the only sturgeon fishing tournament in the country. I, North America, probably. Maybe the world. Heck, I don't know. And we're getting geared up for the, the Sturgeon Fest, which is actually the following week, combined with our scarecrow festival, September, uh, the weekend of September twenty-fourth, Friday and Saturday. We have lots of kids, uh, events going on during Saturday at, from noon to four. Pet contests, uh, pet costume contests at two. Friday night band is Joy Ride. And Saturday night band is the Gobies, starting at seven. Then Saturday, they actually have a, a day band, starting at four, called Weekend Comeback. Um, we'll have sturgeon tanks set up with, uh, for viewing and, and one for touching and one for just viewing. Uh, face painting, escape rooms. There's a little train riding around for the kids. Uh, make and take a sturgeon scarecrow, Roscoe the Crown, four H interactive STEM activities for the kids. Uh, I know they're gonna have a little archery setup and shooting gallery for the kids and all kinds of stuff. So that'll be fun. If you can't find something to do around here, it's like every weekend, there's something going on. So that's all I got on the supervisor's report. Okay, any public comments? No public comments.
Sue Marlowe had one, but we'll just.
Okay.
She didn't ask for it to be read, so.
I haven't really even seen it, so.
Rate it if you want me to. It's up to you.
No, it's, it's.
Okay, it's up to you.
Okay. And, uh, let's see. Uh, can, moving right along to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a minute from the board meeting of eight-one twenty-two, eight-fifteen twenty-two. Um, communication, police department resignation for Matthews, fire resignation for Sito and check reports.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. Any discussion?
So I read the resignation letter for both Matthew and Sito. And how long was Matthew in the, uh, service?
Roughly two years.
Okay, so, yeah, both of these guys and one, you know, Sito with the fire department, you know, he had all this training for three years and everything and then boom, going away to another department.
They got full-time jobs.
I know they got a full-time job, but we, we paid for all the training for them to get that full-time job. That's what I'm getting at, so. I know, I know I'm beating the dead horse with this thing, but I still had to bring it to, to, uh, a comment, so.
Yep.
We, uh, do we offer in the full-time positions too in the fire department?
No.
So it's just all part-time?
Right now.
Maybe that's something we need to look at.
We're, we're trying.
It seems like we're the training, uh, capital of, uh, southeast Michigan. I don't know.
I mean, we're, we're paying in the training, right?
Yeah, a lot of them come already trained. And, you know, we, we get them from other departments too. Uh, how many peak times have we hired people? Oh, look at all the training he has, you know? It, uh, it's just nature of the beast. It's very competitive and very challenging right now. All right, any discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, it passes. Next, we have, uh, fire chief's report.
Good evening. Uh, fire chief's report for August, uh, twenty-twenty-two. During the month of August, I attended three meetings, uh, the Sinclair Flats Association, the Sinclair Fire Chiefs Association meeting, and also a teleconference with the Coast Guard and other agencies involved in the Raftoff event for twenty-twenty-two. During that event, we responded to eight medicals, uh, at Raftoff. Attendance service is kinda down this year, we noticed. It was down about a third of the boats. Uh, so, uh, probably due to gas prices and the economy, people decided to stay home, which is good for us. Um, I'd like to thank our men and women of our department, uh, for working that day, serving that day, and also the Clay Township Dispatch. They worked hard. Uh, and also the, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, Mr. and Mrs. Engel, and Mr. and Mrs. Bryson for their assistance using their property and equipment, which made our jobs a lot easier that day. Um, so we really appreciate it. Fireboat one is out of service. Start, we're having issues with the starboard motor. Mercury's handling all the warranty work on it, uh, so we're not paying anything. And, uh, we're waiting for parts, which I found out the parts came in today. So that'll be up and running. Uh, fire department's working on their next events for, for September. Uh, the Pete Hinkle Parade, we do put our boat, we put Fireboat Two in that, uh, helped them out with that. Uh, the Harson's Island Land Parade, we had our vehicles from the, uh, Harson's Island Fire Department in that. And then also we were planning for our pancake breakfast, which was pretty good attendance this year, which we're pretty proud. Thank the residents for their support. Uh, they all came out and, like you said, they had smiles on their face when they left.
Yeah, people really enjoyed that.
Yep.
Any questions for chief?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's got a good wrist for flicking, flipping those pancakes. All right, unfinished business. We have, uh, a new police department server. We postponed it. Mike wasn't here.
Good evening. Um, like I was saying, in, in, in the description here, our server that we have right now is approximately six years old. They replace, they recommend replacement like every five years of these. One reason being is it is constantly on, it's never shut down. Um, so these things start to wear. And the problem that you get into is, once these things start to go, everything kinda snowballs. So that's why they recommend this. Not to mention with the technology and the upgrades with software and everything else, trying to keep up with it. So that's another reason they recommend every five years. So trying to get a little bit ahead of this, um, one of the other things that they recommended to us is to get, start saving our records off-site. Right now, everything's on-site. So if something happened that was catastrophic, fire, um, if we had anything like a tornado, natural disaster, anything like that, we lost everything, that's it, it's gone. Um, and one thing that you're seeing pretty much in, in all of, well, in, any kind of modern business now is starting to store off-site. So that if these things do happen, one, with this system, we could stay up and running. Literally, we could set up anywhere and remotely, keep working and keep doing everything we had to do. We'll be able to access all of our records, all of our files, all of our CAD system, everything, off-site. So that's another advantage to this as well. But, um, I know it's a little bit more than what we budgeted for, but I think in the long run, not knowing, you know, what could possibly happen, I think we're gonna be a lot more secure as far as that goes. Cause I couldn't imagine if, if we lost all of our data that we store, so.
The redundant system is something I've been doing for the past twenty years, as far as any other records that are concerned. You should have an off-site redundant system.
Yep.
Bottom line, and the insurance company should have recommended that at some point in time.
Yeah, and they did when we met with them this year as one of the recommendations that they did have as well.
Should have recommended a while ago, but I'm totally in favor of redundant system. Is that broken out in here anywhere, uh, as far as the cost is concerned?
Yes, if you look in the quote right there, one is gonna show, uh, down towards the bottom of the quote, what they call the one super micro. That is actually the backup data recorder that you're seeing there. That's the cost of the virtual machine itself, which is a, a RAID-five machine. Um, and then along with that is, what you see next is the six, there is the tech cloud licensing. There's six servers that running this virtually on this system. So you have to have licensing for each of them. Um, at seventy-nine dollars a month each, and that's the thing that brings it up to is, you know, we will have that reoccurring expense of four seventy-four a month to have that cloud storage. Um, but that is because we don't just have one server. We're running six virtual servers in there. That's why that expense comes to four seventy-four.
That's five ninety-four, right?
Uh.
You said, you said seventy-nine. Our quote says ninety-nine, five ninety-four a month.
Five ninety-four.
Five ninety, okay.
Yeah, you had seventy-nine, uh, per server, it's ninety-nine. Maybe they updated the quote.
Six times ninety-nine is five seventy-four.
Well, they actually got this price down for us. I'm sorry. He was actually to get this, be able to, he was able to get the price reduced down to seventy-nine dollars a month.
Oh, okay.
Um, I thought we talked about that one. I didn't know, I didn't get you that one. But he was, we were able, we went back and forth and he was able to get with the vendors and actually knock that down to seventy-nine per server.
Okay.
So it's a hundred bucks cheaper.
So it's four ninety-seven, you said?
I did say something where it said maybe less.
Yep.
Uh, so High Tech is, uh, that is, uh, our preferred supplier for this.
Yes, and if you look at it, it, throughout our area, they're, a lot of our municipalities are using them not only for public safety, but through the municipalities themselves. Um, that's one of their main forms of business. Uh, our, our phone systems here are through High Tech as well. Um, so they've done a great job as far as that goes. You know, we had a lot of issues here as far as the internet system. And our internet system, we kept having issues dropping our phone system. They were one of the ones, they were able to work a lot of these bugs out of there. And the nice thing about it is, they kinda went above and beyond in that. They did things on that that they actually weren't contracted to do, but helped us out on, and they've kinda been like that throughout everything, um, as far as all of our IT infrastructure. They've been fantastic to work with. And at this point, they know our system inside and out as well.
So everything is, uh, pretty much brand name based, nothing, that's nothing that they build in their bathroom, okay?
No, everything is ordered. Uh, as you see here, most of the stuff is like Hewlett-Packard, Dell, and then obviously the, you know, Microsoft licensing.
So we, we originally budgeted twenty-eight thousand to replace the server, but we were working off a quote and things went up. And now, basically, well, we have the off-site storage too, but the quote now is, uh, what is it, thirty-six?
Well, it's still twenty-eight thousand, two sixty-eight, and then the monthly is four ninety-seven, times twelve is five hundred, that's six thousand, so it'd be about thirty-four.
When it's all put in and done with the backup, it's still, uh.
I'm just adding it up, so it's thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, and, and we don't know what kinda incidentals could come into there as far as when we're going rack storage and things like that. There could be, you know.
Some more small stuff.
Yeah, small things like that. So we're just trying to keep that cushion in there.
So, so what Mike was looking for is, uh, permission to not exceed thirty-six thousand. Uh, because we might have a couple more small things that they don't, we don't see yet. Um, and if.
Well, and there's a lot of the work that we'll be doing ourselves too.
Right.
Um, so when it comes into having to buy little things here and there, you know, um, which could come into play with us having to do that end of it.
So we're asking for eight thousand dollars more than the original cost, right?
Right.
So where are we gonna get that money?
Well, we're gonna have to amend the budget if we go ahead and do this.
And how long will this server is estimated to last for? Is it five years again?
Roughly five, five to seven years.
One thing what we did in, in the office too, the big, big enemy on these computers and servers are heat. And, uh, just, we put in an air conditioning unit we're stored at to take care of that problem.
Air conditioning helps, definitely. Do you have any fire protection in there?
Yes.
Okay, what kind?
Um, with it, well, within our records, we do. As far as the IT room, no. IT room, we don't.
I'm gonna think about that.
Well, we had looked into that before and it is.
We can have.
Pretty expensive. Cause the problem is with the way we're, with the way we're set up there in the open plenum ceiling, trying to actually seal that room. That's where you come into the problem, is having to get that to where that room is actually pressurized and sealed, um, in order to put like the, the dry chem system in there.
Oh, you wouldn't use a dry chem, you'd use a chemical or a CO2, but, uh, as part of it. And they also have other, uh, Halon or whatever. I don't know if they still use that or not, but.
Yeah, we actually, our records room and our evidence room's all Halon.
Okay, all right. So that, that, that may even be, if you have enough capacity in that, that may be able to extend into the other room.
Yeah, it's, yeah, well. Yeah, it's, yeah, well, I did look into that, we're not big enough. But I understand exactly what you're saying.
Ford, I'm giving a motion to approve for the police department, new department servers to exceed an amount of $36,000.
Is there a second?
Ford.
Okay, we have motion and support. And our next meeting, I'll probably come back with a budget amendment, because we'll look at the numbers a little bit and see what the best way to do that.
Got to get her done.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more on purchasing the new server not to exceed $36,000? Do we have any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, next, sewer repairs on Joe Char Lane. Oh, this is troublesome. Joe Char, they came to us, it's a private road, and they wanted to do a special assessment to repave it. And if you go down there towards the end, there are some just huge divots in the road. And the problem is, our sewer main runs right down the middle of the road also. And so we thought, jeez, we should make sure our sewer is okay before we put pavement over it. And Project Control, our engineer, they camered it and everything else. There are no breaks, there are no leaks, but they cannot guarantee that there won't be a week from now, or it could last another 20 years.
That's true with any sewer.
Right, well, it's got extreme bends in the pipe. And so they recommend that we fix it. I'm just laying it out for the board.
Well, I would like to see, I would like to see the diagram of what's broken and what, or what needs to be repaired, as far as that sewer is concerned.
Well, it's from the end of the sewer to the first manhole, it's about 240 feet.
So if any portion of that, and once we did, if we did put the concrete on top, any portion of that, that concrete would have to be removed to go down and repair that, and then reconcrete.
Right, or asphalt.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yep. So, that being said, I got some quotes together for, to replace that portion of the sewer. And that would be, they would engineer a self-supporting floating sewer line, they call it so, it's not going to sink and break and have issues. They do this other places around. And so I had it figured out, well, what's, what would be our share of it, and what would be a special assessment share of it for the homeowners? And you see my numbers with the quotes from Project Control?
Do we have actual quotes, or just their estimates?
No, these are estimates. So, and that being said, too, a couple weeks ago, they said, past three, four weeks, maybe a month, their bids have been coming in below their estimates. They've been coming in pretty good right now for sewer work, so I can just throw that out, too. It might be a little cheaper than what they're guessing.
I'd like to get another opinion of the evaluation of the sewer.
Who are, are we going to hire somebody?
Yeah.
And put it off three, four months, and...
I think, I think that'd be a wise decision. Let's get another evaluation on it, without these guys knowing anything about it so far, or whoever we get.
Well, no, they, they camered it, they inspected it. There's no hard brakes right now, but they can't guarantee...
That's what, that's what concerns me. We don't have any hard brakes in it.
They, they, they are, they are suggesting that they won't guarantee it. And so you want me to go out and find someone that will guarantee it in the position?
No, I didn't say guarantee that, now you're taking words the wrong way.
Okay.
I'm saying I want another evaluation on the sewer. That's, that would be my assumption, but it's up to you.
No, it's up to the board.
Well, this is, this is an estimate from our engineering company that we hired a, I mean, they're working on our SAW grant.
Right.
It's the same people who've paid over a million dollars to assess the principal of the township, the structural integrity of the township, right?
Yeah.
And virtually, it's the same work, and we've already paid them a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Oh, last, do you have two cents you want to put in?
Well, when they put that sub in, the only reason it did what it did is because there used to be a canal there.
Right.
If the canal bottom wouldn't be settling or doing whatever it's doing, we wouldn't have the issue.
Right. How long has that sewer been in there?
Since '77.
Everything's built on a sponge.
Do we know, like, how far between the pavement to where this problem is? I mean, any specifics?
How, how far under is that sewer?
That sewer, you're down there, the last manhole on the street's about three and a half feet deep, and then it's gradient from there, and a 10% I believe fall.
Mm-hmm.
So in between those two manholes, it's probably maybe five, five, six feet deep.
Yeah, that's...
They did make a recommendation, I believe, already when you talked to Anthony, about something about a driving seawall on the one side of it, so when it is filled in, that it doesn't tend to run one way or the other.
Right.
Because that's what their figure is doing, what it's doing, is it's, it's an old canal bed, and the canal bed seems to be settling or moving, that's what's making it do that.
Yeah, there's a lot of pressure on the sewer line, and they don't know, I mean, nobody really knows how much more pressure it can take before it snaps.
And the pressure is coming from vehicles driving over it?
From, from vehicles, from, from the, no support from underneath?
Just gravity itself.
What inch is the, what inch is the sewer line? How big is it?
I believe that one down there is 10-inch.
10.
10-inch, don't we have a liner for it?
But the liner's not going to take the sag out of it.
Right. No, but it is flexible.
It's, it's not going to take the support. They looked at that, they said the liner wouldn't work, needs to be replaced.
The line is not actually sagged as far as what the road is. The line itself only has a small dip in it, or otherwise, the line wouldn't work.
My issue, if it does break, it would probably take two, three years before we realize it, and all, until there's a sinkhole created, and all this time, we're dumping raw sewage into St. John's Marsh.
Well, that's a contrived situation right now, you're talking about.
Hypothetical, but that's what I, I'm looking at.
Well, it's also a realistic hypothetical as well, so...
Yeah.
But do we have $220,000 somewhere in the sewer budget to, I mean, can we find it?
We can find it.
What else suffers to do this?
We got to maintain our system.
It's got to be fixed.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have any problem with the sewer flow right now, do we?
Not right now.
So the, the pipe has a, has a certain degree of integrity with it, still.
They're saying putting more repaving over the top of it, though, and all that weight is what they're concerned with, right?
He kind of senses not to fix the line. Because if that's the case, then...
That's, that's the whole...
Right.
To fix the line if it does go.
That's the whole point, if it does go, or...
It's not the whole street, it's only from manhole to manhole at the end.
240 feet.
Yeah.
We'd have to rip the road out, a brand-new road, to fix a sewer line that we knew was suspect.
Yeah. It's $10,000 a foot at 220 grand, basically.
Well, it's also only getting more expensive, so I'll make a motion to approve the sewer fund engineering project, cost at an estimated amount of $219,723 for Joe Char Lane.
Support. Okay, motion and support. And then along with that, we would probably go ahead with a special assessment for the road at 144,672.
I was going to ask, do that, do they have to be approved before this happens? Like, the people have to go along with the special assessment?
No.
Their, their special assessment is already done, their part of it, isn't it? We just have to do our part?
One hearing.
We just had one public hearing, so we'd have to have another one, because their costs also increased.
Yeah, and they're going to continue to, the longer it takes us to fix our part.
Right, so I mean, we can, if you're going ahead with that, then we can schedule the next.
Right, that's what we do, schedule the second public hearing.
I don't know, before I go along with it, I would rather see the data that they, that they provided, and so they can convince me that there's going to be a tragic event happening down the road.
You want me to make an appointment?
Yes.
Okay, I'll set it up with you and Anthony.
Thank you. I want to see the diagram, let him convince me. But far, as far as the motion is concerned, go ahead with that, you know what my answer's going to be.
Okay. But, you know, I'm just going by the recommendation of our, of our engineers, they, they're a lot smarter than me on this. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
No.
Maureen Bory?
No.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the 2014 refunding bond payment. I believe it's our last one, isn't it?
It is. Yay.
Ford, I'll make a motion to approve the 2014 refunding bond payment in the amount of $470,812.50.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? It'll be my last time I can say it. We saved a lot of money by doing this, we were paying five, between 5% and 7% on these bonds. And we went out and got double, AA-plus rated bond, and refunded them at 1.87%, which saved us bundles of money. So that's the last time I'll say it.
Until the next time you save us money.
Till the next time, we do something like it.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
All right, next we have the engagement letter for our annual audit with UHY. Basically, they're saying it's, the basic audit's going to be $34,000. And that doesn't include Gatsby and a few other things, which, those rates are, will be charged depending on the normal hourly rate that they bill us for their audit work.
How does this compare to previous audits, Artie?
It's about the same.
And the contract the same, as far as the...
Well, it's, it's a little different, because it's a different company now, they, Stuart Bovet-Wipple is bought out by UHY. But, you know, their rates are basically the same Stuart Bovet-Wipple's been charging us.
After they completed with the, with the audit?
What?
I know, after they completed with the audit, where does that go? Does it go to the state, or do you stay here, or...
It gets filed, it goes to the state, it goes everywhere, it's public information. They come here and give us the lowdown. Joanne will tell you she remembers, costs a hundred thousand dollars a year we'd spend on our audits.
Yep.
Back, way back, back.
In the old days.
Yeah.
Well, that's when you didn't have anybody closing month-end and reconciling any issues.
They weren't doing all the work that these girls are doing.
Because we're saving money.
Yep, big time. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the UHY annual audit not to exceed $34,000.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
Did you see it said not to exceed $34,800 in the document? Should we change that? It's highlighted on page five.
Is it 800?
Says $34,800.
800. Well, we're, we're just giving me the authorization to sign this.
Well, I just didn't know if it should say 800 on it, since that's what they're talking about in this.
Sure, I'll amend that to $34,800.
We can amend it.
Okay, the motion's been amended, do we have...
Support.
Support.
Support it.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
All right, next we have a contribution to Elginac Clay Library, this is budgeted every year, how the library works. Clay and Elginac own the building, and St. Clair County has, owns all the books inside and runs the library. With this, $5,000 is basically for, and Elginac matches it, is for doing the maintenance on the building, snow removal and that kind of thing.
I'll make the motion to approve the contribution to Clay-Elginac Library, 2022, 2023, for $5,000, which is budgeted in line item 101-790965.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion?
With the increase of the millage, are they talking about lowering our costs at all?
Probably not. I hope they give us more services down here, but that's to be...
Well, that was passed, right?
Yeah.
It got passed in the last election?
Yeah, it's 1.2 mils now we pay for the library.
Very significant.
1.2 mils for our libraries, where our Township General fund collects .5 mils. I'm not going to say, that's what I say, those are facts. All right, and this is, like I say, for the structural, you know, taking care of the building itself. If they need a furnace or something, I know they put new carpeting in that, I don't know how long ago it was, now, three years maybe?
I'd like to see the, at some point in time, I'd like to see the library budget, from the library.
Well, we can get it.
Yeah, I'd like to see...
It's county, it's on, on their line.
I'd like to see what they do with this donated money.
Well, like I say, they manage, it's for the building itself.
I know, we still paying for the carpet?
We paid for the carpet.
So, when they build a new library in the county, does the municipality pay a portion of that, like on a new build?
Depends on where it's at, the satellite ones, I'm not sure.
Does every municipality contribute like this?
Yes, well, yes, for the maintenance of the building, I believe so.
What about salaries?
That comes out of the, your library millage.
And so does, like, the building, like, the rent and the taxes, comes all out of the 1.2 mils, right?
Utilities?
That comes out of the 1.2.
They're tax exempt.
Oh, tax exempt, okay. They have to buy probably new computers.
That, that's what the library does.
Right.
That's the stuff inside. That's the stuff inside that St. Clair County Library.
So that doesn't come out of the mills, the one point two, the computers and the books?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what it does.
That's probably why they increased it.
You have a motion and support, Artie.
Oh, do I have? Okay. All right, any more discussion on the five thousand dollars for a library? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next we have recognition. Sherri Lawton, our famous... Famous.
She's, she's famous right about this time of year.
Yeah, right. Assessor. I just want to make it right. What happened to the, do we have it or...
Yeah, it's hanging up in the assessing department.
It's hanging up already?
This right here.
She's already got it framed.
Oh, it's already framed and everything, okay.
My, I have mine in color.
You got yours in color. Well, Sherri and the Clay Township Assessing Department received a hundred percent on your AMAR audit.
Perfect score.
Which is very, very hard to do. And, uh, we just want to give her congratulations and kudos and, uh, let everybody know about it. Good job, Sherri.
Good job, Sherri.
Thank you. I know she's, everyone's sweating bullets. Oh, my God, we got an AMAR this year. So what, was it every three years or...
Twenty-seven is the next one.
Twenty-seven.
So you can talk to them.
Listen to her. All right.
That's not that far down the road.
No. Dates on the calendar are closer than they appear. Okay, uh, we have a water meter antenna's purchase for a DPW.
These are for some of the meters that are already in that are not broadcasting the way they're supposed to be. So this will bring those up to where those in turn, these are meter pit mounted ones, is where the issue's at. Soon as the water gets up over the top of the meters, they don't want to broadcast.
I was wondering, oh, you just had a, a specific number of seventy-two or whatever they were, or a hundred, I mean.
Well, this is gonna get us...
A price discount?
Yes.
It's not the one for the splash park, but that's still on order?
That meter's on order. That'll come in this fall with the three hundred one-inch meters that you were speaking of, and that, that'll be all on one order.
And it's all budgeted this part, right?
Yes.
It's good to me.
All right. Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the water meter antenna purchase. Quantity one hundred for five thousand, one hundred, twenty-five dollars from line five nine one dash seven four six.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next, uh, we're looking at buying some software. You want to explain what the software does, Lance?
The software's for installing the meters. Um, we had software through Hydrasoft I O. And we installed, I don't know, it was about seven, seven or eight hundred meters, and we kind of had the faith in Hydrasoft, and lo and behold, the system crashed and we lost all our information.
Wow.
And it was unrecoverable. The only thing we were able to have is we did get the meter readings and stuff like that, but all our pictures and everything else are gone. And they didn't really have a whole lot to say about it.
Are they still in business?
Oh, yes. They're still in business.
Well, they said it was through Microsoft, right?
Well...
That's what they said.
That's what they said.
So I was wondering, our cloud storage for our server is not going to be through Microsoft, is it?
No.
Good.
Good.
But this'll, when the guys go out and install meters, they will in turn input all the stuff on a tablet. And that'll go straight to the software. And then in turn, they will do an export. The export'll go directly to the BSNA, so all the, the old meter reading, the new meter reading, the ID numbers on all the new meters and everything will be in there.
We have other people using this, other communities?
Yes. I believe Ira and New Baltimore both are using it.
Okay.
We can't get in the same situation. It's gonna definitely be recoverable.
That, this is supposedly double-backed ups, whatever, the way I understood it from the guy. And this is out of Texas is where this is at.
What did the other system cost?
It did not cost because it was actually, we were, how do you say, the guinea pig at the time? Because it was the first one that was designed, but there was...
That pig died.
Well, the only thing is, they were using it to change their own meters because they actually work for other municipalities.
Oh, okay.
Plus, there was about seventeen municipalities with us that actually lost all their data, so.
Oh, actually, it's, ultimately, it's no additional cost, just a cost.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So Lance, how many of the Panasonic toughbooks do you think that you would need department-wise?
Well, at the cost of those, those are twenty-five hundred dollars, like we had spoke today. And I had talked to Chris Hiltonen, and Chris has actually purchased just regular style, um, pads, put special guards or cases on them. And then for the cost of that, as compared to the cost of the twenty-five hundred dollars each, I would like to have at least three pads if possible. I mean, if every...
Do you have any idea what those are running? I mean, as long as you know somebody has something that works, you know what I mean? Like, this is if you call for help, they're gonna be like, is this what you have? And you're gonna be like, no, we're now...
Well, here again, like I said, this is one step, and then I was gonna talk to, um, the H two O analytics and see exactly what they recommend of the tablets having for, um, memory and everything else, and then kind of go from there.
Yeah, they have, excuse me, they have a listing here of what this toughbook has on it, but...
And I have the big thing that this is...
I am not a guru by computers anymore, so.
Is a scanner, right?
Yes.
So is there an app that, did H two O say there was an app that we could download on a regular tablet to be able to scan?
Yes. And I believe your husband said the same thing. When I talked to Chris, he says that's one of the nice things because they're able to just scan it, scan the new meter, and it puts in the old meter, the meter reading on the new meter and the number on the meter.
And I think at the time that other municipalities bought this tough pad, it was much, much cheaper.
Yes, it was. Yes.
It does say it's...
It was right around a thousand dollars, the way I understood it.
I have a company that I use to purchase our toughbooks through, and I purchase them refurbished.
Refurbished.
Three-year bumper-to-bumper warranty, and I pay less than a third of the cost for these things. And I've been using them for six, seven years now, and they work phenomenal.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that.
Okay.
If you want to give them to me tomorrow, just let me know what the specs are, I can spec them out.
All righty, sir. Thank you.
It does say optional, so I think it would still be covered, since they're not saying you have to buy their hardware.
No, the toughbook is not...
Yeah, it's optional.
Part of it, that's optional.
So it says five thousand meter exchanges. How, is that gonna be sufficient? How many do we have?
That should be sufficient to change the whole township out.
Okay. I don't know how many meters we have.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, um, H two O mobile work for eighty-five hundred dollars and then twenty-four hundred dollars annually from five ninety-one to seven sixty. And then I think we should also give him an allocated amount for tablets. What we think would be reasonable to start for him.
Well, that's the other thing I was talking to Cindy about, variety of service.
They can, yeah, but they can hotspot from their phones for, you know, for service, so that's not gonna be a huge problem. But they are gonna, you know, we'll figure that out with the tablets.
Less than exceed three thousand?
Less than additional three thousand? Well, if they're around a thousand, I would say.
Refurbished ones are?
Four thousand, because you still gotta get them a case and, uh, you know. Screen protector. So not to exceed four thousand dollars, that's all you can get without.
So we have a motion to...
We'll support it.
For the, buy the, uh, software and additional, not to exceed four thousand dollars for tablets and, uh, to support the software.
Do you have support?
I support it.
Yeah. Motion and support. Any other discussion?
What about training? Is it included?
Yes. Yes.
And there's help lines to call, ongoing support?
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Okay, roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, board member comments. Cindy, you want to start us off?
Well, I hope everybody had a great Labor Day weekend and, um, not a whole lot going on right now. Getting ready to, uh, send out ballots soon, hopefully, but we do not have them yet.
All right, Mark?
Uh, planning commission, uh, last Wednesday, uh, the SLU for On the Rocks was, uh, tabled, uh, pending, uh, we, more information from the Clay Township Police Department. Uh, we'd like to, I guess I'll do this, uh, publicly, is that we need to have a list of the complaints that you've had at, uh, On the Rocks, uh, for the past, uh, at least for this year, and maybe going into the six months of last year. Uh, the planning commission needs that, so we can make a, uh, decision on whether or not to support the outdoor, uh, entertainment for On the Rocks restaurant, okay? Thank you.
I'm going to do it for the last two years.
Perfect. Thank you. And congratulations to Sherri. It's not often that we get a chance to, uh, applaud an assessor, but...
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Artie and the board for inviting me to get some more education. We're gonna be taking a class together and, uh, and learning, so start next, next Wednesday.
Yeah, we got, what, six people signed up for a zoning and planning class put up in Port here and...
That's great. I, I asked Kathy or somebody else, it'd be nice if we had, uh, that on a Zoom meeting because I can't do Wednesdays, but, uh, so...
But, uh, it's six weeks' class, so...
Be a worthwhile class, for sure.
Joanne?
Nothing at this point.
Okay. Hey, Chris?
A quick thank you to our first responders. It's been a very busy August. Um, lots going on. Um, and like a true professional, they always seem to make it look easy and take a lot of the burden off of our shoulders. So I appreciate our township PD, our township fire department, and, and certainly all of our water department guys that, that work hard for this township. Uh, congratulations to Sherri on your perfect score. And, uh, congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Walter Skula, um, who celebrated their seventy-fifth wedding anniversary. Um, they had a party over the weekend, and in talking with my wife and some friends, I, I, I'd never been to a seventy-fifth wedding anniversary, nor have I ever heard of a seventy-fifth wedding anniversary.
So Chris, what is that, gold, silver? What, what, what is it?
Platinum?
A coffin, not a...
I'm just gonna call it awesome, Mark, because I don't know the right term for it. But congratulations to them, and, um, that, that's all I got.
Yep. Wally and Mary, there...
It was quite a celebration.
There were a couple, there was a lot of people there, too.
Quite a celebration.
It was good.
Good to see.
Kristi?
Um, I'm just want to give a reminder that summer taxes are due.
I knew she was gonna say that.
Uh, September fourteenth, and I would say at this point, we have six business days. I think it's too late to put it in the mail, honestly. I mean, even locally, I think it's, it's iffy. Um, so there are options to pay it over the phone or online on the township website, and using a checking account, it's only ninety-five cents. So that's not even double the price of a stamp, and you know it gets there on time.
Good words of wisdom. Thank you. I'd just like to remind everybody at schools open, watch out for the school bus and all the kiddies going to school, coming and going, so be careful. And, uh, lots of positive stuff going on in the township. I'm glad we had a safe Labor Day weekend. Uh, a lot of people were out and about and enjoying our area. It's always good to see. One more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Support.
Thank you. Let's adjourn the meeting. Thank you.